City Council, it is August the 7th, 2023. We have a few items on the agenda today, so we'll get started. First up is a resolution to authorize the submission of an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce for the redesignation of a regional institutional strategic enterprise zone, and that would be with Laura Soper.
Thumbs up?
Oh, there she is. Hi.
Sorry, guys. Good evening, Council. Included in your packet tonight is a resolution to re-designate our RISE Zone. The RISE Zone is a Department of Commerce designation that allows qualified institutions and governments to take account of some financial incentives to attract businesses and create jobs. We first designated it in 2018, and we partnered with SU. At that time, the program was a little bit different. It was similar to the Enterprise Zone, but recently they overhauled it and created the opportunity to capitalize our rental assistance program and also an enhanced investor tax credit for qualified Maryland technology companies. The area that we're looking at is the stretch along Route 13 from Salisbury University up to and including adding downtown, so it would be a total of 191 acres. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the council?
Yeah. Haven't we talked about that before?
Well, we've had the program for a while, so it's just expanding it to downtown Salisbury. What types of businesses? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think the color coding on the map that we were given is off. I think, which, so what is currently covered by the RISE Zone?
So, the yellow is currently covered by the RISE Zone, and it would sunset at the end of September if we do not re-designate it.
Okay.
And red is what we would be adding.
Okay. I thought you said that downtown was currently covered in the area.
Not yet.
Okay.
Do you have any idea of how many businesses actually participate in the program?
So, when the program was first designed, it was very similar to the Enterprise Zone, except the Enterprise Zone had stronger benefits. The reason we went after it was a small, we're in the statute, that allowed us to create a TIP if we wanted one, to be used for private infrastructure improvements, and we were looking at that for the possible medical education facility at the old Daily Times site that PRMC owns. That program, the RISE Zone program in itself, has changed, so under its past designation, we didn't have anyone take advantage of it, because if they did, I would typically refer them to the Enterprise Zone. But going forward, I think there are some opportunities there to design a program that would actually be used.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments?
No.
We have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the raw water line and the Naylor Mill project. We should have Rick Baldwin. Yes, there he is. How you doing today, sir?
Well, how are you?
Doing good.
Council President, Council, back again for the Naylor Mill raw water line replacement. As you recall, back in the winter with the trestle that does carry that primary line across the river, the storm event and the piling sheared off. We're continuing in the process of getting that replaced. If you've been on Naylor Mill Road, you've seen the temporary water main that is out there. Earlier this spring, Spring and Associates did do a directional drill up the full length of Naylor Mill Road. They're actually back on site today. They're drilling the one that goes up Scenic Drive to the Sports Complex. We had an initial quote from a contractor at $750,000 to tie these two pipes together, tie them to the wells and back to the plant, which is fairly technical challenge to undertake because there's some old 30-inch concrete pipe in there that's aged out and needed to be replaced anyway, and so it's an issue of getting around that and getting the new wells tied together. From the prior appropriation from the Reserve Fund, excuse me, I said 750 for the prior, we do have another contractor lined up that worked on the raw water main in the Park Water Treatment Plant. Very satisfied with their technical skills and ability, and they came in about $300,000 cheaper, so we are looking to move forward with them, but we are $156,000 short in being able to fund their entire contract. This budget amendment is requesting that transfer from the Reserve Fund for the water and sewer in order to complete this tie-in.
In my reading, it says 150,000.
I'm sorry, yes.
So, that's all I wanted to make sure, if the amount was correct.
None.
No, none.
And just to note that the Paleo Water Treatment Plant provides about 65% of the city's water supply, so this is a critical project. So, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Place it on the next agenda. Thank you. Next is a budget amendment to accept grant funds from the Maryland Department of General Services, an amount of $250,000 for the redesign of the Indian Bear Zoo exhibit. Should have Rick again.
You're not excused yet, sorry.
Welcome. How you doing today? Good to see you.
They'll teach me to continue to read down the agenda. So, there has been a team of people that have been working on this, been supporting them from the engineering point of view, but I guess the legislative for the additional funding for the grant falls to me as well. So, this is to just accept the grant funds from the Department of General Services for that amount, and I would have to double back to honestly answer you whether or not we had a city match. I was not prepared for that this evening.
I can, I can jump in a little bit, necessary. So, it's $250,000 toward the design for the Indian Bear. We also received local funding from Purdue to help assist, $175,000 to help with the design, so this is the first part. Design it, and then we would go toward a capital campaign for construction dollars.
Any questions from the council?
This is great.
Good to have these.
I love it. I can't, can't wait for us to get this done.
Is Pinocchio still there, or is he at other zoos? I thought he was.
He's already been relocated.
Okay.
Yeah, he's in Tennessee, and he's actually getting out of quarantine for their facility in two weeks.
Okay.
He's got a new girlfriend waiting.
Yeah, making other Andy and Bears. Okay. All right. We have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. You're free to go.
This time.
Okay. All right. Next up is a council discussion on recovery and group homes. I know that there's been a number of concerns from residents throughout the city. I'm trying to remember who, this was, Megan requested this one, right? I believe.
The community?
Yeah.
The community, yeah.
So, it came from my district.
Yeah.
All right. So, I think we sent some questions to administration, and I'll bring this over to Andy.
Yeah, I've got a few folks here that, I want to make sure everybody knows who's here, so you know me, I'm the city administrator. Name and title.
I'm Mike Thompson, I'm the Assistant Director of Housing Community Development.
Hi, everyone, it's good to see you. Laura Hay, one of the city attorneys, I don't get to make it here too often.
And, of course, Ashley Bouschek.
So, in this conversation, what we want to talk about with the questions is a little bit of a high-level just discussion on recovery residencies, and make sure we answer some of the questions in real time that people have. Starting at the highest level, when we are looking at recovery residencies, part of the question that has come to light is, what is allowed in residential neighborhoods? And a lot of that, if you direct yourselves to our Chapter 15, specifically within occupancy, it goes and focuses on the dwelling unit registration of essentially the 4 to 2. So, there is a request or an accommodation that is required if somebody would like to have a recovery residency in a residential neighborhood that is more than two unrelated people. So, there's really a couple factors that you face. This is run through our Housing Community Development Team. First, you figure out, they define if they are a functional family, and we have a series of steps in our code that defines that. And then, the second part is to define if they, they would request reasonable accommodations for that, for that use. So, reasonable accommodations may be dealing specifically with occupancy, so how many people can reside in that property. And so, I have Mike and our legal team here that we can drill down on some of those conversations, but, but that's really the crux of it, is where can people have recovery residencies, and what is permitted by our code, what is federally protected through ADA compliance, and then, and then what is our internal process to essentially allow and inspect residences that occupy the space as a recovery residency? So, we have a couple right now that have been brought to our attention on Middle Boulevard that we are going through the process right now of these checks and balances to make sure that we hit this process that has been established by our code, checking on functional family, and then also going through the reasonable accommodation. So, that is kind of the highest level, but we're here to answer some questions, and if anybody else wants to add anything.
So, so when it comes to 4 to 2, and you have these homes, what, so if it's not a functional family, which these most likely are not, and having sat on the Housing Board of Appeals, and we had one that was appealed from us, I mean, to, it really strengthened the 4 to 2, where even, in this, in the situation I was in, it was two brothers and a friend, and they lost. So, two brothers and a friend cannot rent a house or an apartment together. So, that's a very strict interpretation that has been upheld on the city's behalf. So, where do we, where do we go when it comes to a situation where it's five or six people in a home, and none of them are a, what is clearly a strict definition of what a functioning family is under 4 to 2?
So, looking at this, and I'm gonna let the legal team really get into the meat of this, is, so the qualifier with that scenario is functional family based off of a non-protected class of individuals. Recovery residencies fall within a separate category than a brother and a buddy, and that, probably in that case, without knowing the specifics of that. So, there is case law and regulatory agency around recovery residency, so I will, that's where my legal conversation will end, and I will turn it down to that side of the table.
Can I ask a question?
Can they finish answering this question, and then move? One at a time.
The standard is, is that we have to give an accommodation when it's necessary to, for the people to enjoy equal opportunity to the use and enjoyment of a dwelling. And so, under the ADA and the Fair Housing Act, we would have to give an accommodation to someone in the, for instance, if they needed an accommodation to have more people than four, if they asked for it, they would have to identify why that accommodation is necessary and reasonable, and then the city would entertain whether or not it's necessary and reasonable, and ultimately make a determination about whether an accommodation can be granted and how much of an accommodation.
So, specifically, that may be, we want 10 people in a two-bedroom house, and we would, via an inspection or Mike's team, would determine if that is reasonable accommodation, or if there's a capacity, a maximum capacity that is required based off of that request and what we feel is appropriate based off of.
IRC IPMC requirements, because we have specific square footage and fixture requirements based on the number of occupants in a house, so.
So, building code, some of our other maintenance, property maintenance codes, so. So, that is, so when, when a property comes up and is interested in this accommodation, whether it is specifically a recovery home or just in general, these are the steps that need, that need to go through. So, we are actively working through those steps with a couple properties that have been identified at our council meetings, and we'll be reporting back on, on what we, what we know from an accommodation standpoint.
That was kind of my question, do we know that the properties that our residents or our citizens were complaining about, are they falling under these guidelines, and do we know anything about this recovery home that has been put together? Does the city have any awareness of it?
The awareness that we would have received, or that we would receive up to this point is a transfer of the property to a, an Indian LLC specifically. Obviously, we know that that LLC is a recovery and, a recovery-type house. The challenge that we have is, what is our limit of accommodation? That, that's what we're working through right now. What is our limit of accommodation that we have to consider? And if we deny it, what is the liability if we deny it? So, that's the process that we're currently undergoing right now, to determine how are we going to make these accommodations relevant and to hold those people accountable, and then what we do if they exceed that requirement. Let's say that we have a situation where a person has requested an accommodation for 10, we have given them, based on square footage, bedroom size, fixtures available, we give them an eight, they go ahead and we, they agree to it, you know, we, we give them an exception to the 4 and 2 to accommodate that, and then they put 10 people in there anyway. You know, what is our recourse then, when we come back and we get a complaint from the neighbor indicating, hey, there's 10 people living here, we go for an inspection, we count 10 beds, we validate that there are 10 people, we tell them they must reduce that occupancy now to 10, what is our legal stance on that? What, what action can we take? Because under the current regulation for functional family, if they violate that exception, they reduce their occupancy back to 2 max permanently. So, then they never get to go back and request that again. So, there, there are some questions there as to whether or not that, that portion of regulation would actually apply, or if we, if we're gonna have to do legislation to create new legislation to, for, specifically for these. We think that we can handle it in this functional family definition and a special accommodation for them and meet the ADA requirements that we're required to do. We feel like we won't have to do additional legislation, but if, if it turns out that we have to do that, then we'll move forward with that idea. If that, hopefully that satisfies everyone's desire.
The property's in question, have they come to, did they come to the city and ask?
That's what I'm gonna ask.
Did they come to you and ask for?
Yes. They didn't ask us for a special accommodation. We were aware of them.
So, they didn't ask?
They didn't ask.
So, they, how many, does the city know how many people are living in those homes?
No. Not at this time.
So, they didn't ask for an exception under the ADA?
Not yet. No, we didn't have this, this policy wasn't in place at the time.
Okay.
So, that is what we are actively working through, is, because this is, I wouldn't say it's relatively new, the last time something like this was presented to you was when we were looking at the Oxford House and the one in Newton, and at that time, Newtown, we decided to not further regulate it, and now that these, this has come back to the surface, we are making sure that we have a policy that's in place with guidelines and regulations. So, we are actively, swiftly going through that process to make sure.
Do we need to, instead of just a policy, do we need to add this into the existing ordinance?
So.
I mean, because if they, if they are given an exception and they violate it, there, there needs to be repercussions, just like any other landlord who, who would lose in that situation.
I would, I would say yes. Again, I will defer to my right, but knowing what is, what is the case law on some of that stuff, if we were to create a policy that mirrored this, where it's automatically, it's down to 2, is that, would that uphold? We, we have something right now, based off this definition, that we could use, but is that going to, so I think we're still doing a little bit of research to find out. If it is something that is different from this, we can then legislate that. It would make a recommendation to you all at a future time, from an enforcement standpoint. Am I missing anything?
I agree. I think we first need to focus on the request and a decision on the request, and then we can address any enforcement issues thereafter. I think the most pressing issue is the initial request for an accommodation.
But they haven't requested.
That's correct.
They must is on them to make the request.
So, if they don't request?
If they don't request, what, what's our?
Yeah, that was my question, is there a timeline for when they must?
Because we are, okay, so basically, riddle me this, Batman, just, just entertain this for me. So, basically, what we're saying is, they, anybody can come in here with, you know, you know, happy home, recovery, and have 15, 20 people live in there, and they may or may not request, they don't request, they stack the home, and until they decide to come forward, which they may, may, may know to do or may not know to do, then we just sit on that?
So, essentially, you're in violation of zoning code over occupancy if we do not know, so we, if Muir created a frat house with all of his buds and did that, then it would be, he would be in violation, so we would say you need to remove these people in, so it's not necessarily a certificate, certificate of occupancy, but we would say you're overoccupy, and you could start citing people based off of some other rules.
Has the city sent, sent any citations to them?
No, we wouldn't send a citation, ma'am, and it's gonna fall back on, on my office now to notify them. This is your requirement. So, we're gonna, we're going to make contact with the ownership, notify them of their requirement to request an accommodation, we're gonna give them those guidelines within the next 10 to 15 days.
Timeframe and everything.
And then we will, then we're gonna give them 30 days to actually apply for that application and request for accommodation, because otherwise, again, we're establishing a policy that we did not have up to this date. We do get a notification when a property gets purchased and changes, and transfers status, we note, but we, this is not something that's ever been on our radar to attack and say, look, if you're, if you're gonna use it for this purpose, here's the steps you have to do. So, that's what we're in the process of establishing now.
Can I ask another question? Okay. Now, this recovery home, some of these recovery homes that we're talking about, are these criminals? Are these people who have been in trouble with the law before? Because I, I actually need, want to know, and I believe in people having recovery, I do believe that, but I also believe in people having, still having safe communities, so is the police linked with this at all?
And are there requirements for background checks?
That's right.
Okay, so, a couple, couple different things. There is, through federal regulations, the code, the NAR standards, which talk about certified recovery residents in the state of Maryland, if you would like to receive additional funding from the state, you follow a certain set of standards, they have their own inspection process. There is more regulatory agency on, on what you do and who participates in that program based off of those standards. We do not have something that requires in our code, ours is based off of zoning, we do not restrict who and how in our code, and I don't know if we are allowed to do that, that was something we'd have to defer, but saying, you can have this as long as these people meet this criteria, I don't know, I'm not sure if that is something that we are.
I was gonna bring up. Yeah. You wanna do it or me?
So, we have a little bit of history to look at when it comes to this case. The city had litigation back in 2018 on a similar issue, it was an Oxford House, and what happened in that case was, they were running this Oxford House, and the city found out about it, and they sent, presumably, they tried to work it out first, and they sent a notification, and that didn't work, so they ended up sending a municipal infraction. And in the meantime, once they got that, the lawyer for the Oxford House said, well, we want a reasonable accommodation under the ADA, and the city wrote back and said, well, in order to determine what is a reasonable accommodation, we need all of this stuff, and gave a whole long list, and that was one of the factors that was on the list. And that's what was challenged at court, because Oxford House said, we're not giving you that, and ended up suing, it went to litigation, and the court determined that those were all reasonable things that we were entitled to get in order to determine the scope of the reasonable accommodation.
So, we were planning on sending that exact letter, we have a record of it from that lawsuit, since the court has already held that it, all of those requests are valid, we would just, on the basis of that court decision, send that same letter.
So, in that letter is a request for a list of the charges?
Of the charges, yes.
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 Now, what we anticipate is going to happen is, they're gonna notify us that they don't even have that record, okay? Because under their regulation, they're not required to have that information. So, they have to provide us all the information that they have, but they're not doing background checks on their people in certain instances because of the level of recovery that they're involved in. So, we'll, we're, we're gonna wait and see what happens with that letter, but we're anticipating that, so.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It would be nice to know if one of them was on a sex offender list or something, because that's, that's actually required, they're supposed to, they're required to report.
Traditionally, without getting into the details, a sexual, registered sex offender or arson are typically the two disqualifiers in most of the situations for that program.
That program is optional for the person who owns that LLC to allow, whether they want to participate in that or not, so in, in truth, unless, if they decide that they don't want to, if they, if they want to accept that person in, but they don't want to get the money from the state, which I'm sure is pretty lucrative for them, but still, I mean, they could just say, they could just opt out of that.
I don't want to speak on their behalf.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. So, so what we'll do, I think, is let you all do your thing, reach out to them, and we'll circle back to this at another work session, and then if we, in the meantime, if we can find some options that we can codify for the city, to help strengthen any policy we do, I think that might be a wise decision. Does everybody agree with?
I mean, I know I had to, when I opened a childcare, I had to go through the city to get approved, so.
We're hoping to, to really put this in a short timeline also.
Yeah, so timelines, some of the things that Mike suggested was this, within 15 days, you apply, within 30 days, we have inspection, hopefully check all these boxes with a reasonable accommodation, we essentially certify saying, yes, you've met these, you're granted to move forward. That 30 days is beyond our next work session, so our goal would, within a couple work sessions, we should have, you know, a path forward on that, but something we could at the 21st work session is maybe some suggestions, if we're looking at modifying or adjusting our code, we may have some recommendations that we could talk about at a work session for, this may strengthen this, these may be things you want to consider.
I'm sorry to interrupt, one, one more thing is really just striking me. So, we have an unidentified amount of people living in two recovery homes. Has there been any record with our own fire department or fire marshal on inspections on those properties?
So, good question. We actually were meeting with fire marshal right before this meeting. There is a difference by definition of a recovery residence and a halfway house, and they're, and they're regulated differently. A halfway house, a Hudson house, must receive a fire, a full fire inspection, have sprinkler systems, have alarms put in, so it requires a fire inspection. A functional family or recovery residence actually defaults to Mike T., who does that basic fire inspection for residential properties. So, technically, we don't have to, there is not a fire inspection with the fire marshal because of the type of thing, but Mike goes through those checkboxes of, and that's what, what happened in the inspection, is you're saying this is a room, and there are two points of egress, what is the square footage?
Have you had that, have you done that yet with those properties?
We have not, ma'am.
We have not.
And we just don't want these popping up everywhere, we just don't want this for the safety of our community, and I'm not saying, like I said before, I'm not saying that, I don't believe in recovery, because I do, but we have to be mindful how these people are coming in here and infiltrating our communities as well.
And I also think that it's a safety issue, as far as for the people who are participating in this program, if they don't have to get inspected by the fire marshal, that is a disaster waiting to happen.
We, we, we inspect for egress and, and that type, that's part of my inspection.
How soon can you do that? I feel, I, I.
Again, we, we feel like, we, we feel like we should be able to get our inspection within 15 to 30 days, so that's.
Rather quickly.
Yeah. Even, even a, even a non, a person that fails to register their property for rental inspection, that is a 60-day requirement. So, you know, we're, we're trying to cut that in half, and, and we believe that we will get that type of inspection, that, I don't think they're trying to fight us on it, they just, the requirements, they just need to be notified, this is what we want you to do, and I think that they will, but we'll see.
If they don't, then we.
We'll take the next step.
And, and we know what the next step is, so.
Just give us an opportunity to try this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, we will circle back to this, if you've got suggestions for legislative action, we'll put that on the next agenda for the work session. I think time is of the essence on this one, so.
If there's anything that council would like us. If there's anything that council would like us to put into consideration, please forward that to our office.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good.
All right, next up, plastic bags.
Yes.
Why is this sitting here like this? This is crazy.
Tom, please have your bag inspected by security downstairs.
Hey, Elise, hey, Dylan. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I am going to, we're going to tag team this similar to the last one. I am going to talk in one capacity. Dylan and Elise are going to talk in a different capacity. Everybody knows the two next to me, we did introductions a second ago. Maybe we'll just do it for the record. Again, Andy Kitzler, City Administrator.
Dylan Connet, Sustainability Specialist.
Elise Treligan, Chair of the Green Team, Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Great, so what has been asked to be brought forth for council discussion is the plastic bag ban, the recent ordinance 2756 that went into effect July 1st. We recently have sunset our first month, or I won't call it our trial run, but our adjustment to the new policy, so we're lax on enforcement. And we are now, been given an opportunity to take a peek at what we have stood up, what is working, if there's any areas for modification that the council is interested in doing. I will highlight in the past, I think everybody received the ordinance. The one area that our office has been getting the most feedback from, and you all have received some of that in public comment, is a section 5.69.020B, which is line 95 of the ordinance. Specifically, it is, "A retail establishment shall charge, collect, and retain at least a 10 cents for each paper carryout bag and reusable carryout bag that it provides to a customer." That is the one item that most of the people have been contentious with. Overall, from a compliance standpoint, and this is for you all to, you know, talk about, we've seen where a lot, paper bags are working. I don't see a lot of plastic. I don't, I've not, we've not been met with a lot of resistance from use, use of paper bags. A lot of the concerns has, continues to be around restaurants, takeout areas around paper bags, and the charging or the enforcement of charging of bags. So I am here to listen and just present what information it is. I'm going to let Dylan and Elise talk a little bit more specifically about that and whatever else they have seen through the first month, so I'll turn it over.
As Andy was saying, really in terms of implementation, we have been seeing across the board acceptance of the ordinance. Really, the only phone calls that I've been receiving that have been really frustrated with the ordinance have been less so with the philosophy behind the ordinance, and more so behind, you know, how it actually operates, how they can implement it for their own businesses, and exactly, you know, like I said, the implications of not cooperating. I find that after I explain how the ordinance works, you know, the grace period, any sort of resources that we have available for them to learn from, things cool down very, very quickly. People have been very receptive to our comments. The Green Team has been doing a fantastic job. There are a few here today that I'd really like to thank. Unfortunately, I'm not facing them. Really, as Andy said, you know, there has been some frustration with that 10-cent fee. I think, you know, from what I've heard the most is that people don't quite understand how to change their point of service. But, you know, Elise can speak to the fact that operating a point of service for a bag fee is really no different for operating it for any other sort of fee that you might have, whether it's food items, other retail items. You know, it's as simple as typing in something and quantifying it. Otherwise, you know, I have gotten a lot of phone calls, and we've gotten a lot of letters and emails recently highlighting just how supportive people are of this ordinance. And really, I'd just like to say this, and maybe this sounds a little political of me, but we are ahead of the state in this ordinance. You know, the state still has not passed a plastic bag ban, and I'm really proud of the city for that. And so, you know, I was here as a student when council was exploring adopting the ordinance, and I'm here now as an employee, and I'm very encouraged by everything that's happened. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, and very happy to have the great Elise Treligan with me.
I'll just add that the Green Team has been doing, and partners have been doing, an extensive amount of communication and community engagement around the bag ban. We put an infographic up on the SBY Green social media a couple of weeks ago that maybe you saw. We've worked with organizations like Habitat for Humanity, Junior Achievement, Lower Shore Progressive Caucus, working with Wycomico Environmental Trust now to get hundreds, maybe even thousands of bags out to community members. We've worked with some of you, like Councilwoman Outen, Councilwoman Jackson, to do community engagement walks to get bags to people. And that's a priority of ours, not to just stop now, right? Even though we're just 30 days into our full implementation, this is something that we continue to want to do and make sure that we're supporting our community members with. I'll also just bring to your attention that the city of Laurel banned plastic bags in January 2020. They did not have the 10-cent fee that was associated with their ordinance, and they actually just revised it to include that 10 cents, because they saw that people were just defaulting to paper bags. We know from a lot of literature that that's, that's going to be the case if we get rid of this 10-cent fee. So I just wanted to remind us of why that's there and show that detail with you.
Mr. President, if I could.
Sure.
One, a couple of the calls that I've received, there's always unintended consequences. Take a company like Burger King. Burger King has always provided paper bags, and now we're asking them to charge 10 cents for the bag. That's something we, we should address.
Yes.
At the very least.
That was part of.
Because double, it's, it's like, well, I've been doing it right, and now you're going to make me pay to do it right. So I think we have to look at several cases like that, and they're not alone. There are other companies that have used paper bags and are now being forced to pay, to have people pay for the bag. So that's just another aspect on top of everything.
Well, I thank you for bringing that up. I'm sure Elise could explain this as well as I can. But the intention behind having a flat mandatory fee for all businesses, regardless of the types of bags that they had used before, is less so to deter businesses from using them flat outright, but more so to incentivize people to bring their own reusable bags. We know, we want legislation that, you know, creates environmentally friendly behavior among our own residents. So, you know, if a business has already been using paper bags, and it's a concern of costs onto the resident, there's absolutely nothing in the ordinance that stops a business from distributing those extra costs throughout the rest of their costs. They could average, you know, the amount of bags that are used per transaction and just distribute that amount throughout each item. I think it would be frankly a little myopic to actually just consider not having the fee for, for the businesses that were already using the, the paper bags. Because at the end of the day, there's still energy that goes into using the bags, or rather, creating the bags. You know, the bags can still be sources of litter. You know, not all paper bags are perfectly environmentally friendly. A lot of them do unfortunately have harmful chemicals on them. So the idea is really to allow people to opt out of the bag. And of, you know, just like Elise was saying, you know, if people aren't faced with some sort of negative externality, they might end up choosing to go with the paper bag regardless.
I think, I think the one thing, another unintended consequence, a company like Burger King, it's in their cost of goods sold, and that's how they bill it. They also have an automated billing system when you go up and you order. And that, adding the extra 10 cents, it seems like nothing. But when you, how do you go in and adjust your whole billing system to accommodate that extra 10 cents? Now, I'm not saying that what you, what you described as our goal, is our goal. The one thing you don't want to do is discourage businesses from conducting businesses in an environmentally sound way when they're already pretty much doing that. And if you check the bags from, for instance, Burger King, you'll find out that those are very environmentally friendly, the paper bags. They don't contain those things that you're saying.
I think the other issue with the drive-through situation is it's not an option.
Yeah.
That's, that's the, I think that's the big concern when there's, there's situations where it's not an option. And then now you're forcing me to pay a 10, 10 cents, and they're already going to give me a bag. So I think that's the, that's the concern that I'm hearing from people in those situations.
Yeah.
Yes, and my granddaughter has been brutally attacked just about from that. She works at a fast food restaurant, and she gets attacked every day. I mean, to the point where she, she's actually gone in her pocket and gave him 10 cents of her money. Here, here's a 10 cent. We shouldn't, I, I feel as though we shouldn't be asking people to pay. Does it cost any more to make paper bags than it did to make plastic?
Well, I think the big issue with restaurants too is the sanitation. I think Angela's brought that up.
Yeah, I want to bring up a couple of different things. I want to bring up an experience that one of my very good friends had this weekend at a, at a coffee shop. Pulled up, was getting coffee, a donut, and like two little snacks or whatever. They, they gave her two bags. They put one, one thing in one bag, one thing in another bag. They could probably put it in both bags. Then they charged her for four bags. So, so there's always that too. So, but the other thing is with, I think the unique thing, and I have some, I actually have an article about it. I could share and pass on, in regards to, fast food, I think, is in a unique position to be exempt in this regard.
Yes.
Because I, I don't usually eat fast food or whatever, but, you know, I, my son was in town recently, and he does. And so 2:00 in the morning, we're going to wherever, wherever to get a burger. I'm not having my reusable bag, or I didn't bring my reusable bag. And actually, to put like fries or a burger or whatever in reusable, I worry about, did I, is that bag even clean enough or hygienic enough? There is a high, there is a health safety thing with reusable bags. That's why at the grocery store, I believe, with the plastic bags, you can wrap your individual meat products in, your vegetables in. What else is on the list for groceries? Yeah, fruits. There's like a list of some exceptions. And the thing, the grocery store list revolves around the freshness of the food, the, the food that's there. Even if I get a rotisserie chicken, I can put it in a plastic bag. See what I mean? To collect any juices or any messes, or, and so it doesn't contaminate any other food. So if I bring my own reusable bag, you know, I'm pretty tidy and neat. My bags are clean all the time, you know, wiped out, da-da-da. Not everybody's bag may be that clean. And I think to put in, you know, a muffin or a sticky bun, an order of fries, a croissant, in a reusable bag, I think there becomes some health issues, and I don't think it's practical either in the delivery of the, the food. I think the fast food piece is very much like the grocery store piece with the items of food. And I can see where people would be very frustrated about that. And I think we've given it a month, and we've tried it, and.
It's not working.
So, can I jump in?
Yeah.
There may be some policies by a national chain that won't allow you to just take that donut from them. They may not even allow that transaction based off a policy. So before we jump into, you know, a decision point, I want to throw a couple of things out there. So specifically, I know this is what we're talking about, but if there's anything else we want to cover, we can cover that. Understanding the actual legislation with it saying, "Shall charge, collect, and retain", there's several things that have been spinning in our office or suggestions. One is you change that shell to "may", allow the person to be able to charge if they choose to. Another one is creating an exclusion. You say, "Fast food", is it restaurants, is it takeout, is it a drive-through pharmacy? You would have to then pick what it is, and then whoever's not on that list will want to be on that list potentially.
Andy, is there a definition for "fast food"? I think that would be, that's something that's come up in Green Team that would be really challenging. Is Chipotle fast food? Is Panera fast food? Like, where does this?
I, I know, and that's, that's the part is when.
And you get it within five minutes.
Yeah, and then, and then, but. Yeah, and then you have takeout. So where does Uber Eats land, and where does everybody else who's coming to picking up your food? Is Chinese fast fooders and not? So then, is it restaurants in general? So then it's like, so it becomes very complicated. It's not overly complicated, but there will be an exception that is not on that exclusionary list that will then potentially challenge it. A gift shop that is always on bags, you're going to now make me charge my customers because I don't serve food? So there could be something that could be challenged when you do that list. And then the other option is you, you, you strike, and you just don't have a charge period even identified in, in the situation.
I think giving businesses the opportunity to charge if they need to. I think if we changed it from, from the "shall" to "may", I think that is really what, what, when I brought it up, that was really where I was leaning towards on this, because like, like the pharmacy thing. I go to pick up prescriptions for my family. I walk out of there not only with one big paper bag, but a lot of little paper bags inside of it. Are they charging me for every single one of them? I'm not sure, I've never actually even looked at my receipt. But, you know, I mean, at what point, at what size do we say, is this is a paper bag? You know? And each, each, each medication has to be bagged separately.
I will say, just to interject respectfully, we have communicated with many businesses about what classifies as packaging and what classifies as a carryout bag. We have clarified that any small paper bag that's used for one specific item really should be counted as packaging. You know, we have talked with HCDD, and they have agreed that that's, you know, their lens of enforcement. Yeah, so, you know, those sorts of things. And Angela, I know you're talking about, I believe it was your niece who is getting charged for the donut bags. That should not be happening, but I do see your point of frustration, of course.
But getting rid of the 10-cent fee is completely antithetical to this ordinance, and this will walk us back. I mean, I just gave the example of the city of Laurel. They're doing the exact thing that we put in place, being proactive, putting together an ordinance that's really, gets to sustainability and equity, because it's not fair for some businesses to shoulder that cost and others not to. I think the 10-cent fee really has to stay there.
Hi, Grie. I personally, I think without the 10-cent fee, there's no incentive. The whole purpose of this bill was for it to encourage a change of behavior in our community and, and removing it, or making it a, a maybe, or a, or a, you know, you can if you want to, kind of removes the whole purpose of the, the bill in the first place, in my opinion.
But how do you charge people for bags that you were giving to them before?
Right.
We even had a charge.
Right, I mean, that's, that's.
How do you charge people for that?
Because they've already built it into, Rise Up builds in their, their paper bag that you get. That 10 cents is practiced into their, like, business model.
I don't think they deducted that from the price of the products that they're selling now.
And a lot of people aren't doing it, they're just charging 10 cents.
Yeah, they're just.
For every bag that you get. You go to Walmart, you got to put down, how many bags you got? Two, three, four, five? No, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. And then you've got, like I said, the fast food restaurants are charging for bags that they've been giving all along for free. And that should be a complimentary thing, because you're paying for the food.
Then we get back to the issue again of, this was meant to be a trash reduction in the community. And then we're really, I mean, when I was promoting this, and when you first passed this, my family, you know, they remember the era where you went from paper, we're killing the trees, to plastic, oh, we're saving the earth. And they saw this as kind of a cyclical thing. Well, now we're trading plastic again for paper. And really, the purpose of the, the fee was to stop that cycle of paper back to plastic, back to paper, and to make it a reusable, and change the habits of our residents. Though I do acknowledge the concerns that you guys are saying, because I'm not saying that this is a black and white issue by any means.
I think there's room for compromise specifically in the, like, takeout, delivery, like, you know, pick up at the counter sort of, or drive-through rather. I think that's where people, that's where the most complaints are coming from, right? And I think that that's the space that makes the most logical sense based off of what we've heard today and what we've heard from community members.
I do, I am worried about the logistical aspect of it that was brought up, and, and making, and singling out one group of businesses, because everybody else is going to suddenly say, well, hey, what about us? I don't want this to be, to be something where one business is being favored over another. I think, you know, the op, the, the option of, of making it optional may fit that need. While I don't think Walmart and, and some of these other businesses are going to roll back that fee. I don't see these companies, many companies that, that really probably wouldn't care either way if someone spent 10 cents. And honestly, they, they probably like getting that 10 cents, to be quite honest, because those larger companies do not get, pay 10 cents per bag, I guarantee it.
What's interesting is, there is, you know, this compromise, this idea of who's on the list. There are certain industries that it is not an option to not have the bag because of that thing. That is the exclusionary component of this. If you get to go to a register and say, yes or no, that to me says then you can be in or out. If I don't get the choice, and that's typically every to-go or fast food thing where you have to have from a health standpoint.
Exactly.
Packaging, then you are exempt. But if you create that option where you get to have choice. But if you create that option where you get to have choice, maybe that is where you are in or out, you know? So it sounds like there is a couple of different options. Is you create a list, there will be people who are outside looking in and are not happy. And then there is this idea of, are we, if we do "may," is it really achieving the, because we call it a plastic bag ban, but Meg, to your point, is it reducing of trash in general? What is our goal here? And I think that is, those are the two highest level things. Sorry, Councilwoman Blake, you were going to mention something else.
Well, I think we could really, really, really start with the list that already gives us an exemption. You know, those bulk items, including fruit, vegetables, nuts, grains, candies, small hardware items. Contained, wrapped, frozen foods, meat, fish, whether packaged or not. You can get a plastic bag at the store, like one of those things on the roll thing, okay, which I do. Contain or wrap flowers, potted plants or other damp items. Contained, unwrapped, prepared foods or bakery goods. Goes back into the muffins, the fries, the little pies or whatever you get. Contain a newspaper. Contain garments or drying cleaning clothing, including suits, jackets and dresses, and anything that contains ice. So I mean, I think that's a list right there that says these items.
We've established exemptions already.
We have already established.
For the use of plastic, not necessarily.
Yes, for the use of, exactly, for the use of plastic. So my thing is, these very foods that we're exempting for plastics in a grocery store are the very foods in these fast food restaurants and these coffee shops and these.
They're just prepared.
They're just, you know, and if I go to Sam's and get one of those rotisserie chickens, I can get a bag. Because it's, you know, damp, it could be damp, and it can leak the juices or whatever. So I, you know, I just think putting, you know, a cheeseburger that's wrapped in a, I don't know what they wrap it in, a tin foil or whatever, and something like that, stick that, you know, in my purse with my fries and my.
Stuffed fries?
Yeah, my McFlurry or whatever. It's a disaster waiting to happen.
I got you.
And I'm just, I just, and I know a lot of people complained about it. And I think some of the restaurants are confused. Even when I've gone shopping or when I've gone to restaurants or, to hear the people in line, it's quite entertaining. But the bottom line is even they are confused. And I do think there needs to be a balance. And I would go for the "may" instead of "shall" in regards to the fresh fast foods or food that you get, you know, or.
Prepared.
An order place or something like that, or define that clearly what that is. And some of the places don't really give you an option. That food is already bagged. I come rolling up with my little bag, oh, I'm so here. No, it's already bagged for you. Well, I didn't really want that bag. Well, it's already crimpled down. It's already like rolled up from the cake. I'm like, okay, so there's my, okay, fine, 10 cents, ching ching, that's fine, you know? But, you know, I still think the health with this fast food stuff too, or prepared foods, is interesting and concerning about the level of people bringing their own bags. I store my bags right by my front door most of the time. There are some bags that stay out in my, the back of my trunk. I don't know, I'm not going to roll up and put my rotisserie chicken in that. So I'm just saying, I think we need to figure out a better, something.
I think the simplicity of the "may" versus "shall" is it just makes it so much more simple for people to understand. We're making this unnecessarily complex. And I understand having that 10 cent, like I said, I don't think there are many businesses that would roll back that 10 cent fee. Because it helps pad their bottom line. I mean, let's be real.
I mean, is there a possibility to, I mean, it sounds like there's a group of people here on this council who want to see the "may" versus "shall." But making it a hard, not a hard line, but just, are you talking about across the board? Like everyone "may" versus "shall"? Are you talking about a small group? Because I would love to see it allocated for this specific, like Angela mentioned, the list of the fast food prepareds. I mean, personally, I'd like to see the ordinance stay as it is, but I recognize that you guys have raised some good points. But I'd rather the 10 cent fee stay across the board with those exemptions for those fast food.
Well, again, I mean, we just had a business owner in here last week who was saying that they've always used paper. They've never used plastic and they want to, they don't want to charge their customers. So they're just outright not charging their customers that 10 cent fee. You know, and that is something that I think you're going to see an increase of because there have been a lot of small business owners, I'm not talking these big companies, but small business owners who have come to me personally, who have said, hey, we need, you know, we've always provided these and we ask people if they want to use a reusable bag, but if they don't have one on them, I'm not going to charge them for a bag that I would have given, I would have freely given prior to this legislation.
One of the questions, I wish Mike T. was still here from an enforcement standpoint, and Lisa, maybe you can school me on this one. We are talking about a new 10 cent fee that now exists, so an upcharge rather than a included cost of goods. If I'm understanding, I think I heard you say that Robinsons, for example, who spoke, is that if that 10 cents was already in his business model, then that would count? Or would he be required to add an additional 10 cents on top of it?
10 cents on top. So it has to actually show on the receipt that somebody was charged 10 cents. Now, they can adjust their prices within their own, you know, business model to do so. And we know that Burger King isn't going to do that, right? They're huge and they have their $1.99 burger or whatever. But a smaller business might be able to do that, particularly ones that are voicing these kinds of concerns. I do also want to remind us that we are just 30 days into this and it may be a little premature to start making changes, both because we could cause mass confusion. People are already confused, it would add another kind of layer on top of that. And also, we haven't seen like the full results of implementation yet. There may be other things that we would want to change. And I just don't think it would look really good if we made this one edit and then in 60 days, we come back and say, oh, actually, we need to make this other one. So I just, I'm thinking, Michelle, we talked the other day and, you know, maybe like a six-month check-in would be the appropriate time to kind of revisit this. And that way, we could come with comprehensive, you know, suggestions.
I don't know about that. I tell you, a six-month check-in is lovely. I mean, that's my, you know, I go to the doctor every six months. But what I'm saying now is people are furious now, not six months from now. And I see the fast food and the prepared foods being the biggest issues. Now, other stores or whatever, you know, that could be a broader discussion. It could be a "may" across the board, I don't know. I do feel we already have clearly in the legislation, a very defined list for exemptions for plastic bags. And I think that that would be somewhere to start. To me, it's more about the safety of the food issues, the prepared foods, the fast foods, the sticky buns and all of this. So I don't know if, you know, I think six months is the ideal thing, and I know we've only implemented it a month.
So you're saying just an exemption for any food items, any items that have to do with food?
That's the grocery store.
A fast food, like a fast food place.
Prepared food.
Like a prepared food, like a, like a muff, like to put a muffin, you know, okay, I forget my bag. Just say, I'm just saying, you go through, you get a muffin and you get one of those egg sandwiches. And what do you get? You put it in your purse or you put it in your little reusable bag that may or may not be clean. I mean, then that becomes a mess.
And who's going to come somewhere with a bag just for a muffin and a donut? I mean, for real, that's.
You just got to have.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, you got to be prepared, I guess.
The other, the other piece about absorbed cost of the bag that they have to, you know, a business may do it, but they can't advertise that they're doing it. So John could reduce his cost of a gold coin by 10 cents to put it in a bag for 10 cents. However, if it's considered packaging, then, and a lot of times with jewelry stores, I mean, I guess liberally, they could construe that what they do is packaging.
How did they do it back in the day when I was getting paper bags? And we never got charged for paper bags or anything when I was coming up and just got a bag. But that was like complimentary from the.
That's before the.
It's almost like, especially with the pharmacy, you know, it's not in here. But, you know, they have to package stuff separately in bags because somebody's got blood thinners.
Yeah.
You know, I know from hazmat, when I have to inspect every week at work, that anything with blood thinners has to be in a separate disposal container from everything else. So it would be the same thing if it was distributed as medication. It would need to be packaged separately from other people because I don't think Linda wants Jack's blood thinners on her.
Poor Jack.
But, so I don't, I mean, it's almost like to some extent, you don't want to sit here and have to like break out every single exception.
That's, and that's my concern.
And that's the, where it, you know, there is a difference between Walmart and Robinsons. You know, Walmart, it's higher volume of customers, thousands of customers a day. You could probably assume that the North Walmart sends four or five truckloads of plastic bags to the landfill every year just on their volume of how many bags they go through. So that's, you know, that's the, that's the only thing, you know, doing the "may," it kind of waters a little bit, but it's kind of hard. But I think some of those other businesses, if they consider what they're doing as packaging, I think that's a different, that's a different argument on that. And but certainly, I think, drive-through restaurants and prepared restaurant food should be added as an exclusion. Because I think that needs to be to some extent specific unless we, unless we consider it packaging. But in 10 years, I don't know what the people at, who are enforcing it are going to consider what the law is.
And we could use the word "may" for them. Say we do an, okay, so fast food people "may." If we still even leave it open for them, maybe.
You want the "may."
I just, I just feel like the charging for 10 cents, for me to go up, roll up and get, you know, the coffee roll, you know? I just don't like mess.
So there's, so three categories of food, and I know we're getting into the nuance, but it probably is appropriate. There is drive-through. There is fast food pickup, we'll call that Chipotle. You walk up, you get your food and you go. And then there's takeout and there's, you know, takeout, delivery through a secondary media like an Uber Eats or just purely a delivery provider. All are prepared foods that are.
Should be exempt.
In that situation. And the deli counter in a Walmart, I don't have an answer for that one because you're getting prepared food potentially.
They have plastic bags.
Plastic bag, you get that, then you.
Well, that would be, that's one of the things listed already. That's what's already listed.
Oh, I know my list at the grocery store.
When you're saying exclude, you're not talking about the paper bag.
Right.
You're talking about the charge. Okay, we're only talking about charge.
We're only talking about the fee.
Talking about the ban.
No.
Essentially, in those, you cannot, I can't have my, delivery driver come pick up my bag from my house and go to the place.
Right.
Get the bag and bring it back.
I hear what you, I just want to make sure it's clear.
That right now.
And then you have the issue of somebody ordering Uber Eats from a restaurant in Del Mar that doesn't have the bag ban and is delivered to a place in Salisbury.
Right, so, I mean.
So we're looking for some direction. If you guys want to continue to give us any direction for modification, if you want to talk about that, have further thoughts.
I think we've, we have consensus on, on the eliminating the bag fee for carryout restaurants, pharmacies, and any other business that considers it a part of the packaging process of the product.
I think that.
We would need a definition of, that one becomes a little bit more complicated. I know what you're saying, but I would want to understand. We can put something, we can draft something.
Why don't we draft something?
And bring it to you on the 21st.
Let's draft something and then bring it to the council. Is that all right?
I think that's, I think that's good because this is going to take, I don't think we're going to solve this right here and now. I think this is something that we're going to have discussions about.
And don't worry, we are not eliminating the plastic bag ban. That's going to stay into effect.
That's not what this discussion is about at all.
We're just talking about one little piece of it.
What we're trying to mediate.
We have people in the community who have reached out to us many times.
Is that what you said?
10 cents, you stand, if you go shopping at Acme or Walmart.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Grocery store.
Right.
It's a 10 cent fee for the bag. We're just talking about a couple of these other little spots.
Those prepared foods, I think, is a unique, I think it's a distinctive difference for the health and safety for a variety of reasons.
And as we are going through this, we'll talk with our enforcement team to continue a grace period as we, of this industry specifically, if there is any discrepancy. So knowing that this is something we may consider.
The grace period is over for everybody else, though, yeah. Yeah.
I would like to say just real quick, according to many different surveys, studies, the average American consumes 365 plastic carryout bags every year. And a large majority of those do come from grocery stores. So I would just like to reinforce that that is not by any means my recommendation to remove the 10 cent fee from any sort of grocery store, supermarket or anything like that.
Yeah, we know, we have.
Yeah, we have no intention of that.
Great.
We have no intention of that.
I think this was just a discussion about.
Fast food.
Fast food and.
Carryout.
Carryouts and businesses that previously, especially, you know, smaller local businesses. This isn't about.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa, thanks, Dylan.
We got one more item on the agenda.
Bird scooters.
Thanks, Emily.
Bird scooters.
Sorry about that, people, but I've had a lot, I'm sorry.
It's nothing to be sorry about.
Hey, look, you got to do what you got to do, girl.
So you rode your bird scooter in over here?
I did, I did.
I saw her flying. She was going down 50.
I was maxing it out on the scooter. You know, I've had a lot of my constituents complain about, not necessarily that the city has bird scooters, but mainly that they are left in sidewalks, driveways, properties. It impedes people's ability to walk, especially if they're older, handicapped, had strollers. And so there's a lot of, one, I want to know what the benefit is. I mean, how much, do we have a number on how much money it's even made from its inception? How much we made from the scooters? We get like 5 cents a ride or something like that?
I'd have to get an exact number. We are.
Well, is it really about how much money we're bringing in as a city versus providing transportation options for our residents?
Yeah, we could, we can get a.
I'll make it accessible. I mean, that's the problem.
Okay, I want to, I just want to know for curiosity, since we are receiving 5 cents a ride. For curiosity, I would like to know what we are receiving for the bird. And I'm glad that, you know, we are providing different modes of transportation for a variety of reasons. My concern is, is that they're just, are all over the place in people's property, in their bushes, in the sidewalks. And a constituent that has been emailing, actually sent me something really, really nice. I, when I go to DC, I actually do ride the birds in DC.
I got a picture of that or video?
Yeah, I do, but I will not share. But the thing of it is, they actually have a lock stations or lock stations throughout the city. So part of the contract in returning it, there's a lock station or a way to dock it. And I just don't know if that's something we can look into or, but there's got to be something to be able to pick up the scooters that are abandoned in people's.
The company is supposed to do that, but they're not, are they not doing it? Is there an enforcement issue that we need to?
I don't know.
I can say in my district, in my street specifically, a number of them are left across the sidewalk, scattered on the road sometimes. However, I am happy to see them there, but I wanted them to be placed in a safe area where, you know, someone isn't going to stumble over them or a car is going to hit them.
Well, I'm going to tell you this, once those, and you know, I'm totally against them, for real. Once those bird scooters are off, they're heavy. They're very, very heavy because I've tried to pick a couple of them up myself and put them on the curb. I'm like, uh-uh. They're very heavy. So when they go shut off, people just leave them wherever they are. But they do have some people that do come around because I've seen them pick them up. Most of the time, it's like midday or late at night when they do it. But they do have people that do it.
I think it would be great if we could just let people know how they can report them to the company to come pick them up again.
That's a good idea.
We, we've done social media pushes on this before, but I think also doing another one would probably be a, be a good idea. You know?
So there's, yep.
I think, you know, I just, I have the accessibility issue. I mean, I've had people leave them on the, one of the few curb cuts that we have in my neighborhood, Hinton.
Look at the time.
Just putting that out there. But, you know, I've had, they've left them in the curb cuts, you know, the disability accessibility issue of trying to get down the sidewalk with those laying everywhere, you know? I mean, my husband and I are there to move them. there to move them, but there's other individuals who are disabled, who can't, and, yeah, I mean, this is...
Yeah. So there's a couple, so when we were exploring this idea, and, and interesting to talk about it, so they call them nests because of their birds.
Right.
Um, is, do you return it to the nest or not? So you can return it to the nest for penalty, or you can return it for profit. So essentially, if, if you are parking it correctly, return it to a rebalancing location, you get a credit toward your next ride. So you incentivize behavior rather than penalize.
But you can't determine where it's going to go off at.
If you run out of batteries, or you run out of money, correct. Um, but, so, the, the difficulty is when you have a, a set location, is my ride is a, is a point-to-point rather than a destination ride, is I, so I have limitations. If, if I don't, where I'm going is not close to a spot, then I may not hop on it. So that's the hardest part. So then it comes down to behavior, is you're supposed to stand it up, you're supposed to park it the right way, you're asking people to do that. Um, that's where it becomes complicated, is will people just lay it on the sidewalk, lay it in the street, your front yard, driveway? Um, it's this reward cost benefit, but I do think 100% a campaign on letting people know, you know, proper policy and stuff. And if we are not rebalancing fast enough and picking up errant, um, scooters, soon enough, that's something we can address with the provider of the program. Um, but, you know, a scooter in the back of your driveway that's been there for two minutes, I even back over it with your car, we wouldn't have gotten it fast enough for the rebalance, or somebody who is wheelchair-bound and it's scooters, or piled up across the sidewalk, because a group of people just dropped in there five minutes before, it does not address that concern either. So, um, there's a lot of things that's like, is, is it a, what, what's our goal here? Is our goal to provide the transportation, or, and, and deal with some of these, these nuisances, or, you know, try to just help continue to correct bad decisions and poor behavior, um, do a campaign to incentivize behavior? There's a lot of ways we can address this. Um, and then there's the ultimate goal of regulations saying, they can't be here. I don't, I don't think we're there yet. I still think the pros outweigh the cons. Um, but there's definitely some issues that continue to, to some. Um, Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I agree with that, and, um, I too get frustrated when I drive down on the way home and see the scooters laying on their sides, or in a crosswalk, or in a, you know, near a crosswalk with it. So it is frustrating. Um, and, uh, I still have some concerns about the young kids.
Absolutely.
Um, who, I wonder how they have a credit card, um, and, with their parents giving, well, that shouldn't surprise us really, considering what's going on. Um, but, yeah, we, I think we need to look at it. We're going to look at the financial piece of it again, to just to see if it makes sense. Uh, the other thing is, originally, the concept was, if I'm, if I'm correct, that we were going to give the opportunity for the university students to use them to get around, and they're not allowed to use the scooters on the campus, is my understanding.
So, yeah, can't go across campus.
So they can't go across campus, so, you know, that's sort of, yeah. But anyway, I thi, I think we need to look at it, and I agree that, um, it, there are some issues with it. I think it might be time to have a meeting with them and just have them come talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Andy, just, I had one question about the birds, real quick. Is there, did SU, like specify why they are not comfortable having the students use them on campus?
I don't know.
Um, I would have to get the exact reason, but in the initial conversations, um, because of Salisbury being part of the state system, it was a decision at a higher level to not have them on any of the campuses. So I think they continued with that. Um, and maybe something that can be revisited, um, but, uh, it's, that's kind of where it landed at the initial inception.
And the other thing is, technically, it's in the county, it's not in the city.
It is. It's 50/50.
It's a liability.
So it, it could be something along the lines of, you know, the campus is built for walkability, and some of those scooters are very fast, so...
Yeah, but I've been on that campus. I, I went on that campus, and they allow bikes, they allow those motorized skateboards now. They, so I was just curious. I mean, that's outside of our jurisdiction, but I was curious if we could continue a conversation with them.
Thank you for entertaining the, the bird scooter conversation.
We'll go to council comment, or no, administration comments?
Administration.
I just, oh, can I just, oh, I'm sorry. No, I, I just really have one comment I want to make. You know, it is, uh, you know, we talked about some difficult stuff today, and the behavior, the, of the council, the relationships that you guys continue to maintain, even though there's a disagreement, the relationship that you maintain and have with us as an administration. I just want to applaud you on, on how governments, local governments, should be able to work together and behave. And I know we go over difficult conversations and contentious things, but it can be done like this. Um, so I do want to continue to applaud you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, I attended Unity Day on Saturday. You all missed a great fish sandwich, that's all I can tell you. Uh, it was a great day, uh, great people, uh, car show, uh, any kind of gifts that you want to buy. I mean, it was, it was really a great, a great, a great day. So thank you for, April, thank you for helping with that. Um, and as always, please, if you're capable, please give blood. We're still woefully short of what we need.
Very grateful.
So, thank you.
Uh, we'll go to council comments. Uh, this week, I will start with Ms. Alton.
Did not get a chance to attend any community events this weekend. I took the time off and just spent some time with the family. We celebrated my grandfather's 80th, and it was the first time we had all had a chance to gather in about a year. So I really enjoyed it. Uh, great, because campaign season's ramping up, so we're all getting a little busy. Um, just wanted to take the time and thank everyone who came out today. I know that this is the last place you want to spend your evening, especially on a beautiful day like this. So thank you all. We encourage it. Please keep coming out. Your feedback really helps us guide the city in the right direction. Um, second, we do have some events coming up in the city. I wanted to highlight one of my favorite, which is the Friday Night Live event, that that gets hosted at the downtown amphitheater every Friday. It's a free event, starts at 5:30. It's a bring your own chair scenario. Um, it's just a great opportunity for you to connect with the community and just listen to some good music. So please come out. We'd love to see you.
Ms. Blake?
Well, Mr. Kitzrow.
Oh, man.
My son was in town recently. He's in Manhattan right now, and he is still bugging me to bug you about the Dan Quinn for the win, um...
Yes, approved.
Statue. Um, so he'll be down in, in a couple weeks, for about three weeks. So I'm going to bring him in, so you guys can discuss the details for the Dan Quinn for the win statue in the middle of town. Um, because that's so important. But, again, um, definitely, if you are healthy enough, and you are blessed to be healthy enough, please donate blood. Our area is in a very critical spot with blood. We don't even have a full day. Um, major accidents, it's courts, it's the beach, we have a lot of traffic, a lot of, all kinds of things happen. Um, one pint of blood saves about three lives. Also, consider being an organ donor. Um, and that even co, covers bone, being a, you know, your bone marrow. And it's just very important to, to think about those things, and, and just be blessed for your own health. That's it.
Ms. Jackson?
Alrighty. Well, I'd like to thank members of the VFW 10159 and their auxiliary, um, the VFW state and local officials. Um, I'd like to thank the members of SACIA, and we here, um, Car, Car Club, um, our acting mayor, Jack Heath, Councilwoman Angela Blake, and Michelle Gregory, and all the information persons and vendors that attended. We had an awesome time. It was a great day. The weather was just awesome, um, even though it was a little humid. And, um, it's good when you can come together in unity, and block the streets off, and just, everybody just have a good time, and you watch the kids enjoy themselves. Um, they really enjoyed themselves. I think everybody there enjoyed it. I heard no complaints, heard nothing but good things about that day, and it was Unity Day slash day in the streets. Um, it was awesome. And I thank everyone who attended, and we will be having more events in the community. Um, so just watch out for me, because I'm coming. And also, I'd like to give my deepest heartfelt condolences from the city to the family of Keith Cheney, who was murdered Monday evening at Pemberton. Um, it's a sad time. I will constantly, I don't care, I will reiterate it. Every time I'm here, our kids are very valuable to us, and our kids are killing each other. And it's sad. And something has to be done to keep our kids safe in this community. As I said before, I will be taking at least 20 to 25 kids, um, in September, September the 2nd, um, to, um, Killens Pond for activity. And their kids from the community, I don't have to know them, I just know that our kids need something to do for the summer, and the summer will be ending soon. So I want some of our kids to at least enjoy themselves, or say they've been somewhere and done something, and then we will sit and have some conversations with those kids as well, to see what is going on in their lives, and how can we help them. And no better person can tell us how we can help them than our young people. So this is what I'm looking forward to this summer. And my kids say, Mom, you need to rest. No rest for the weary. I always want to do something for my community, for my city, and for the county. So, for those who have helped in any way, I thank you so much, and I wish you would continue to help our city grow, our county grow, and our communities grow. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory?
Um, on a little bit of a lighter note, number one, I want to thank April for having that Unity Day, and being a part, uh, part of organizing that. It was really nice. By the time I got there, it was sweltering hot, and April was hard at work over the fryer. So, I, I don't even want to know how much, uh, how, how overheated she was, but, um, I know a lot of hard work went into it. It was a great turnout, um, even when I got there. So, it really, really great event, and I'm looking forward to next year's. Um, one other thing I wanted to shout out, I don't know if folks have happened to notice or anything, but like, we now have a semi-pro soccer team coming to Salisbury.
Yeah, we do.
Um, the appropriately named Salisbury Steaks. Um, their first game is December 9th. Uh, they've got season tickets, uh, for sale. You can buy individual game tickets, but me personally, uh, the, the, the season tickets are only $45. I think it's going to be worth it. I'm hoping they come, become the soccer version of the Savannah Bananas, personally. So if you don't know who the Savannah Bananas are, give them a Google, watch a few videos, and have fun. They're, they're pretty cool. Um, but yeah, uh, just check them out. I think, I think this is going to be, this is going to be great for the city and, and for Salisbury, the Salisbury area, not just the city. Um, and I'm looking forward to it. So the first game, like I said, is December 9th.
Yes, I have one more thing. Um, this Saturday, I can't remember the time, and I'm looking on Facebook for it. Um, we'll have Dre Day. Andre Collins, who was a, um, professional basketball player overseas, he always has this Dre Day, and it's near his birthday, but he always recognizes the kids. So what he's recognizing this year is the two young men who were slain. One that was in Laurel, Delaware, and the other one that was slain here in Salisbury, Jojo. So he will be recognizing those kids, and I think giving some, a donation to the families. So if you have something, you don't have anything to do, make sure you make it to Dre Day. It's at Washington High School, and I can't remember the time. That's what you get when you get old. Sorry, getting old, you can't remember things. But make sure you make it. If you can't, just look on Facebook and look for Andre Collins, and that, it should be on his, um, page. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all that. Um, I don't have any comments this evening. Uh, didn't do anything this weekend, because I had to work.
[laughing]
Uh, so, at this time, I will be entertaining a motion to convene in closed sessions in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland, uh, 3-305B14, to discuss a utility easement agreement involving a cell tone, a cellphone tower. Uh, the reason for the closing the session is due to express confidentiality of current and proposed vendor agreements, as protected from disclosure under the Maryland Public Information Act, of which public discussion at this juncture would adversely impact the ability of the city to participate in the proposal process. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to convene in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Awesome.
We are now in closed session.